Mount Ala Township on January 8, 2025. I direct that this announcement be entered into the minutes of this meeting.
And we'll take a roll call, please, Ms. Shoney.
Mrs. Aquino?
Here.
Mrs. Fenton?
Here.
Mrs. Figuera?
Here.
Mrs. Fitzgerald?
Here.
Dr. Giordano?
Here.
Mrs. Melendez?
Here.
Mrs. Narcisse?
Here.
Mrs. O'Neil?
Here.
Mr. Orzillo?
Here.
And I will take a motion for the approval of the minutes, Mr. Orzillo.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes.
And do we have any questions?
Pick one, Nicole.
Do we have any questions or comments from the board? Nope, seeing none, we'll take a roll call.
Mr. Orzillo?
Yes.
Mrs. Aquino?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenton?
Yes.
Mrs. Figuera?
Yes.
Mrs. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Dr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendez?
Yes.
Mrs. Narcisse?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Neil?
Yes.
And do we have any communications or petitions from the board?
For the board, from the board?
No.
Okay. So now, Dr. Bangia, should we go in the closed session?
Yes, that'll be great, thank you.
And we like, for the public, we're going to take a brief recess to go into closed session. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Just a brief, closed session, and action will not be taken. All right, now I can't find my stuff. All right, I will bring the meeting back to session. Let's take a roll call, please, Ms. Shoney.
Mrs. Aquino?
Here.
Mrs. Fenton?
Here.
Mrs. Figuera?
Here.
Mrs. Fitzgerald?
Here.
Dr. Giordano?
Here.
Mrs. Melendez?
Here.
Mrs. Narcisse?
Here.
Mrs. O'Neil?
Here.
Mr. Orzillo?
Here.
And with that, we will turn over to Dr. Bangia for superintendent's report. I believe we have a presentation this evening.
That was quick, I didn't really, you know, we just had that break and we're finished.
I know.
So before we get into the preliminary budget presentation, I'd just like to take a moment to recognize the phenomenal achievements of our school, of students this past weekend, starting with our junior ROTC. They were over in Washington Township, in which they competed in their competition drill. They received first place in unarmed color guard, first place in armed color guard, first place for their solo exhibit, as well as dual exhibits. Athletic challenge, first place, academic challenge, first place, and unarmed overall winner. So kudos to the phenomenal program, both the students and staff. So I really wanted to make sure that we had an opportunity to recognize them, as well as our phenomenal robotics weekend. Not only did we host on a phenomenal program that has a rich history within our school district, but our team brought it home, number one team. So, Miss Melendez, you want to, real quick, what were the team members, do you remember, off the top of your head?
I have them written out.
So it was Team?
There were.
Eleven varsity, right? And then Team 430, correct?
Yes, we have Team 11, which is our Mord.
Yeah.
And then we have the nine graders, which is Team 193, the Beta. And then we have a mentor, Team, which is Mord Gamma, which is Team 430.
So we had, so clean sweep this weekend, I like to say. So certainly, kudos to our amazing students at the high school. At this moment, I'm going to turn it over to our illustrious business administrator, Ms. Nicole Shoney, who's going to be talking about our upcoming budget.
Good evening, everybody. Tonight, I wanted to give you an overview of our preliminary budget for the 25-26 school So these are the topics that we'll talk about and that are in your handouts, and this presentation will be posted to our website at the conclusion of this meeting. As you know, the board adopted Budget Development Calendar on December 16. The first is the hyperlink to the calendar that was adopted at that time, and the link underneath it is the calendar that has been updated, because we did use that as we developed this budget during the season. And I do want to extend my thank you to all the administrators and staff that helped us put this budget together. It was an extraordinary amount of work, and everybody was very responsive to my emails, sometimes around the clock, and asking questions, so we can get everything that they want to get in this budget to take care of our students and staff for the upcoming year. And with that, I can say there was actually very little that we had to cut out of the budget, due to scrutinizing every single budget line, scrutinizing the current year budget, finding funds in the current year budget, to alleviate next year's budget, in an effort to take advantage of the $5 million in state aid that the district received this current year. So we wanted to make sure that we spent it wisely, because we knew that we were not getting another $5 million in state aid moving forward. So this screen up here shows a few years of our state aid. Twenty-two and twenty-three, 22, 23, 23, 24, were flat. Current year is where we saw that almost $5.1 million in state aid, which according to the State Department, they said that this was the final year of the phase-in plan to be fully funded. So as we were planning the 25-26 budget year, I was praying for flat state aid. And probably about three weeks before DOA broadcast came out, which never happens, they usually leave you biting your fingernails to see what they're going to do with your state aid. And they said that the most that they would cut a district state aid would be 3%. So naturally, we planned on a 3% reduction, and that was really hard. That was really hard to do. We were really struggling, because I would have to make cuts, because what's in this budget are all contractual obligations, employment obligations, licensing obligations, our health benefit increases from our broker, our property, and medical, our property auto insurance, workers' compensation insurance. Those are all in the budget with appropriate increases, because I can't, we can't cut fixed costs. We're going to have to pay those, you know, with, there's been a lot of talk of tuition reimbursement over the past year and a half, and it has played out, because we're, we support tuition reimbursement, because we want our teachers to get higher degrees, and they want to move across the guide, and they have. And as a result of the tuition reimbursement in our salary budget is an additional $204,000 of all the staff moving across the guide. So that, that's quite, it's a lot of money, but it shows the dedication to the staff that they really want to give more for themselves, they're willing to put in the time, and give more to their students. So I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Bangia.
And just as you can see, we lost about a total of close to $340,000 compared to our prior state aid. Certainly, it was not the windfall that we had of $5 million last year, and we were, as Ms. Shoney pointed out, planned for this, and certainly, if it was a 3%, it would have been resulted in cuts. Here, we were able to, you know, tighten our, you know, belts a little bit, and try to figure out what we can do within this confine, but certainly, that's a testament to the hard work that Ms. Shoney put into this budget, as well as our team, from our staff to our administrators, to make sure that our students are our number one priority. So what's in this budget? You know, from a personnel standpoint, our really focus is on academic excellence, you know, and one of the things that we're going to be really proud for next year is that we're going to be introducing a gifted and talented teacher at the elementary level. We really believe that all students across the, you know, spectrum are, need our support, so we're infiltrating that into the school day. We'll be adding another elementary multilingual teacher as our multilingual population increases. We are excited about introducing a new mom fifth grade team, in order to ensure that transition between elementary and middle school is created, a small learning environment, an additional high school English teacher, as well as an additional in-class resource teacher at the high school. And in addition to our academic excellence, we're really focused upon well-rounded students in development, so we added, are going to be adding another clinical social worker, interventionist, as well as our continued dedication to expanding our special ed program. We are adding a new ASD, Autism Spectrum Disorder Classroom at Sand Shore, along with not only a classroom teacher, an ABA, as well as the needed supports as far as paraprofessionals. We'll be adding an ABA specialist at TENS, as well as elementary-based occupational therapists. This is going to be addressing our continued focus upon bringing outside services in, as far as not paying vendors, so this is going to be actually a cost benefit to the district, because these people are really, the services are going to be employees of the district. We also be bringing in physical therapists, that's going to be shared between the high school, middle school, as well as an additional child study team member. Here, we are going to continue our trend of ensuring that our technology plan is being fully implemented through the replacement of end-of-life devices such as Chromebooks, laptops, desktops. We're going to be continuing purchasing Promethium boards, interactive boards in our classrooms, as well as maintaining our current devices and through repair and support. And what I should have probably mentioned, from a personnel standpoint, we are adding another technician to our ranks as well, in order to get the support needed to our staff during the school day. The last, and obviously, I think the most important, obviously, is curriculum. We are going to be continuing our march to enhancing our curricular opportunities. We are going to be continuing our march to enhancing our curricular opportunities for students and staff about looking at K-5 ELA curriculum resources, renewal of our math curriculum, both at the elementary and middle school, reemphasizing our focus upon Conker Math from grades four all through geometry, which takes us into the high school, as well as PD in the areas of K-3 with Conker Math, and then looking at our curriculum resources for multilingual learners, and as well as providing targeted PD for all our staff regardless with the role they play here. And that's something that we're really proud of, that, you know, we don't do, you know, one size fits all. We really want to make sure that the expertise level, the familiarity, as well as the areas of services they provide our students, is a PD that they receive. And I can't thank the curriculum instruction team for putting this together, as far as that's concerned. And at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Shoney, who's going to talk about all the amazing capital projects we have onboard.
So in front of you are the list of capital projects that are in our proposed budget for 25-26 totaling a little bit over $4 million. And as you know, the district has been very diligent over the past several years in ensuring a deposit to their capital reserve account annually to beef up at the account. And of course, with the referendum going down, that really made us really dig down and make sure that we were taking every available cent possible and socking it away, so we can spend it on what is needed in the district. I am not going to read each thing on this list, but I will highlight, we need some boiler replacements, roof replacements, the door lock replacement at the middle school is a tiered, was a tiered project, because it was so expensive, so this is the last part of that project. Again, at the middle school, we need to replace the entire public address system. It's really a safety and security system issue that needs to happen. You'll see that there are several parking lot expansions in the district at the various schools, some interior, exterior door replacements, you'll see some playground additions. The district did apply for a playground grant that we're hoping to secure about $100,000. That's the maximum value of the grant, and the monies that you see in here make up the difference from the grant at the three, three of the elementary schools. We do have in here the track and turf field replacement at the high school for close to $1 million. That is near its useful life, and we need to upgrade the safety of that turf field. This is a turf field that has extra cushion, for lack of a better word, to help prevent concussions. It is close to a state-of-the-art track and field. Our facilities director has seen these turfs in place at various schools in the state, and they are quite impressive. This has an extended warranty of over 10 years, and with proper maintenance, it could even last longer.
And no pellets? I was going to say, as a mom, no pellets.
No pellets.
No pellets, right?
Hooray!
So, yeah, so you won't have that in your backpacks, in your hair, in your clothes, all over your house.
Your house, your car.
And the last item I want to point out, we have a modular office building for the transportation depot. If anybody has been over there, it is really an awful place, and needs to be, it really is.
She's not being honest at all.
No. It really, it really needs to be replaced. We tried, it was part of the referendum, and so this is a modular office building, which there'll be plenty of room. We're looking right now to secure an additional, what's the word I'm looking for? A meeting room for the driver, a break room for the drivers. So I found another vendor to give us a quote, because the first vendor was completely insane. So because we would like to replace that as well. So that is what's in our capital reserve account. And this is a quick analysis of the district's two accounts, going from the top down. Our opening balance, $7.2 million for cap reserve. We're withdrawing $1.2 million to support the current year budget. Due to good bidding results, we were under budget by about $650,000. That will go back to the account. We're estimating to earn about $300,000 in interest this year, because this money just sits there all year until we withdraw it to fund a project. And then we are anticipating to deposit an additional $2 million before the end of this school year, which will leave our balance to about almost $9 million. And then to support next year's budget is the $4 million that I just showed you on the prior screen, and then continuing to that subsequent year, another $2 million, if not more. So you can see, we're really, we're saving. We'll have almost $7 million, if not more, because interest is not even calculated into that dollar amount. Maintenance reserve, same process going from the top down. We withdraw $500 to support our required maintenance. That's low interest as a placeholder, and again, we'll return the money back in June. For 25-26, we're going to take out $600,000. We have some additional initiatives to take care of, but we'll return another 500, if not 600, and we'll still have over $1 million without interest at June of '26. So the revenues, I'm not going to go through each piece, because Dr. Giordano told me I have five minutes, and I think I've already, I've already exceeded my five minutes by a lot. So going from the top down, obviously, you know, the taxpayer takes care of the majority of our budget at $81.300,000, which is an increase of 3.88%. And at the end of the presentation, when I discuss more about the tax levy, I'll go into more about the 3.88%. But going from the top down, various revenues, our state aid, which I have on the side, that went down by that $300,000. We increased some revenues based on past experience, the unrestricted miscellaneous revenues that went up by $220,000. That includes additional rentals that have been really coming to fruition over the past several years. You can see the actual audited line from '23-24 is $1.8 million. So we felt comfortable increasing that revenue line a little bit. The extraordinary aid, the district has had process of budgeting about $650,000 every year, but as you can see, '23-24, we received $2.7 million, and we, and we are, we increased the anticipated aid for next year up to $1 million. I didn't want to go too much, but we felt comfortable increasing it by 350 would be good. The Medicaid, this is a number that the Department of Ed gives every district, and every district across the state of New Jersey suffered a ridiculous increase, decrease in their Medicaid. We still have to do the same amount of work. In Mount Olive, we have about 350, 360 students who rely on these services. So that is a dollar amount that is given to us by the Department of Ed. Moving down to the bottom, you'll see a few lines that says budgeted fund balance. So from the top down, the budgeted fund balance from the operating budget, that's the money that we say, this is what I can save during the current year 24-25 budget. So we're going to save $1.8 million from that. The next line down is the excess, the $1.5 million that is derived from our audit that just completed, so that has to go back to tax relief. And the fund balance unassigned, that is in relation to the X-Aid that the district received in '23-24 that you see up there for $2.7 million. That revenue does not flow through a district's fund balance, and a district is not held with their 2% fund balance restrictions. So you also see on the agenda tonight, we are withdrawing from X-Aid from about $500,000 to support current year expenditures that represent one-to-one aids, added district placements, additional aids, home instruction, all items that were not budgeted for that. And of course, that's the purpose why you get this X-Aid. You complete application showing the amount of money that a district is spending on all these itemized services. So we're using it to replenish the budget for these non-budgeted items. So the million dollars that we're withdrawing from the unassigned is the X-Aid. So we can use that money to keep our revenues, so we don't have to make several cuts to the budget.
Ms. Shoney, I'm sorry to interrupt you with the X-Aid, though. Make it clear to people, it's supposed to be dollar-for-dollar, but that's not what we receive right in the state.
And it's never been dollar-for-dollar. It was, it went from 90% to 80%. It went as low as 74%. There was conversation at the legislature to fully fund X-Aid, but it's never going to happen. It's like what available monies have. So we're very fortunate to get the funds that we did.
Thank you.
So overall, you'll see that our revenues are going up by four and a half percent. General fund, I am not going to go through all of this. This will be, this will be put on our website, so you can digest it, and we can talk more about it at the hearing. I'm sure you'll have lots of questions, Mr. Wells-Muller. You know, a lot of, a lot of, like, you'll see based on, that's, we wanted to talk about what's in the budget first. So the value of all the staff that Dr. Bangia discussed is roughly about $900,000. So that's in where you see increases in several lines, and in the curriculum lines, where we discussed the PD and the curriculum, that's valued at well over $500,000. And those are the things that you want in your budget, you know? It can't all be, oh, it's salaries and benefits, because, you know, yes, that's 80% of our budget, but, you know, we're a lot more than that. We're here to educate children, not to pay a utility bill. So, so these are the various expenditures, it goes on. And this document relates to when you will look at an audit document, you can go on to the Department of Finance's website, you can pull down audits. When you look at the budget document, that'll be the user-friendly budget. It's in this type of format. When you, when the advertised budget is in there, it's in this format. So we wanted the community to see how it flows, and that when you have questions, you'll be able to recognize the format of it, that's why. Special revenue, these are local, state, and federal grants from the government. Some of them, revenues have to equal expenditures, so that's why you don't see revenues or expenditures. It has to be the same. Local projects, those would be any type of local grants that you get. SDA grant, we had capital projects grant in '23-24 was the TENS HVAC unit, that was the capital maintenance grant. So that is finished in current year. Our federal grants, Title I, II, III, and IV, you'll see between the revised budget and the proposed budget, it's gone down quite a bit. And a couple of reasons why. In the revised budget, we have carryover monies in all four of the five, including IDEA of those projects. Carryover funds, meaning funds from the '23-24 grant period, but were not spent at June 30th, so a district is allowed to carry over that money into the subsequent school year. So you'll, so that's included in the revised budgeted items. So when you're budgeting for these federal and state grants, the guidance used to be budget like 85%. And because you never know what's going to happen with these types of grants, and most recently, the advice was to budget 75%. So I had to absorb about $350,000, $400,000 from these grants that we rely on, because you can see from IDEA alone, our, without the carryover, the current year grant is about $1.2 million. So you see, I'm only budgeting about 880. So the balance of what we use between outside providers for related services and professional development for our staff, and aides, and ABA therapists, we had to absorb them in the current year budget, because we can't not be with them. We need, we need all of that in our budget. And then moving down, the ESAR funds, that ship has sailed. We, those phones, those funds are done. And so that's our special revenue budget, $1.1 million. Debt service, our debt service is currently, we have two bonds, both were for, are for the high school. One was refunded from 2007, and 2005 were the bonds. We have one that is falling off July 15th of '25 with that payment, and the remaining bond is about $7.5 million left, and that will retire during the '29-30 school year. So this is why you see debt service is going down 10%. We were trying to avoid that with the referendum to try to keep, excuse me, the tax levy even. We don't want, you know, spikes and peaks and valleys in our tax levy, but it is what it is. And so how are we going to pay for all of this, right? So, so the school district is on a fiscal year, July to June, and the town is on a calendar year. So that's why you see the split years of the tax levy. So going from left to right, you'll see the general fund tax levy is the $81,300,000, and the debt service is $1.761 million, so for a total of $83 million approximately. So it's calculated, you take the half from last year, and you take half for next year, and then the ending column is the certified, the total tax levy is the fourth column to the right. So that's the tax levy that the tax rate is based on. So now what you do is you take the difference between the net valuations in the district, and the district has seen an over $100 million increase in their ratables for an increase of 5%, which is, when I was speaking with the tax assessor, he said there were two commercial properties that really added to the ratables in the district. So the ratables went up 5%, which is fantastic, because last year, the tax levy only went up by a few hundred thousand dollars and just under 2%. So when you take the difference in the tax levy, that went up by 2.7, 2.76%, there's actual a reduction in the tax levy due, the tax rate, rather, there's a reduction in tax rate due to the 5% increase in the valuation. So if you apply those tax rates to our current and then proposed budget, you'll see, I do them in increments of $100,000, with the average assessed in Mount Olive being $325,000. You'll see that on an annual basis, we're showing a decrease of about $160, which is total between the debt service and, the debt service falling out and the general fund, which was showing an increase of 3.88% in the tax levy. But again, taxes are going down for 160 grand. You always want your net valuations going up. Your property is worth more, you could sell your house for more, and you could pay less taxes, so yay. Oh, we're missing a slide.
Joe, could you get out and just refresh the presentation? There's one more slide.
I left the slide out. It's not in, it's not in your packet, I apologize. I thought it was...
The last slide before, there you, right there, perfect. There you go. Actually, the one before that.
There it is.
That's it, that one, okay. That's it.
So I just wanted to, because as everybody knows, usually you reduce your tax levy 2%. So I wanted to show a history of over the past few years. '23-24, the tax increase was 5.93%. In that budget, the district used healthcare adjustments and some enrollment adjustments, which you're allowed to go beyond the 2%. For '24-25, we increased it 2.27%, and in that tax levy was an enrollment adjustment of a little over $200,000. This year, the district did not qualify for an enrollment adjustment, but we qualified again for a healthcare adjustment. As an aside, for '24-25, we did also qualify for a healthcare adjustment for about $750,000, but we didn't need to use it, because we received $5 million in state aid that we weren't anticipating, and we had $4.6 million in excess surplus, so we wanted to use that. We didn't want to really go beyond the 2% in taxes. So that, that healthcare adjustment generated in '24-25 can be brought forward for the next three years. It's called banked cap. And then so for current year, how you strike the tax levies, you take the current year tax... you take the current year tax levy of 78 million, you inflate it by 2%. And that's what's known as your minimum tax levy. And the district received a one point, we qualified, rather, for a $1.8 million healthcare adjustment, which is calculated, the software compares what we're anticipating for our health, medical, and prescription costs versus the increase that state health benefits is showing. And because state health benefits is showing a much higher increase than what the software is calculating for us, it allows, it generates this healthcare adjustment, which helps a district increase their tax levy over the 2% to take care of some of these expenditures that they may not otherwise be able to afford. If we exercised that full $1.8 million, the tax levy would have been 4.34%. And there was no way we were going over 4%. So, we made additional cuts, and we reduced the adjustment by about $360,000, which is $1.4 million, which you can see is a resolution on the agenda. And that difference of 359 is also called banked cap, which means that you went underneath your maximum tax levy. So, you're allowed to bring that money forward. So, now we have roughly over $1 million to bring into our '26-'27, '27-'28. You're allowed to bring it forward for three years. So, I just wanted to show graphically how the tax levy is calculated. So, that's it. How long did I, how long was I?
Not too long.
It was perfect.
Six minutes.
It was perfect.
Perfect.
So, obviously, any questions? Call me, email me. This will be on the website. And when we have our budget hearing, we can, we can dig deeper.
Does any board members have questions?
I would just like to thank Ms. Showning and the business office and Dr. Banjia. People in the public don't realize how difficult it is to create a school budget. I know this is the heavy lifting now, and people think this is the end of it. After this budget gets struck and the board votes on it, the next month, you're already planning the next school year's budget. You're budgeting a school district a year and a half, two years in advance with so many unknowns, not knowing where we're going for state aid, not knowing what health benefits costs are going to go up. So, it's, it's an excellent job, and it's not a very easy job to do, so thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comment?
Well, as I, as I said, it was not me. I was part of it, but the entire staff is just amazing here. Very detailed, very thorough. It's just great, great to work with, great staff.
Excellent job.
Ken, I have a couple of questions. Maybe we'll go back. So, as we all know, every year we all wait to hear, Ed Reses, what our state aid is going to be. Can you go back to the state aid and kind of explain? Let's, what we have there?
State, that's the beginning?
Yeah. The pieces of the state aid and how that's qualified. So, we have the equalization aid.
What, that's on, that's another one? It's revenues then, isn't it?
I think, no, it was before. It's before the.
It is.
No, it's, we don't have that detail.
There's another, just another page for. Um, it was like this.
It's this one.
The third page.
The history of state.
It's the third one, the easy, smaller one. Uh, one more.
Okay. So, we have the, the trans aid, the special ed aid, equalization aid, and security aid. Can you explain the very, very large number of that equalization aid and how we?
The equalization aid is based on the wealth of the community. It's based on tax returns probably from the 2023. They're behind a few years. It's based on the wealth of the community as where as, well as free and reduced lunch. It's sort of like a shell game where they mix it around. I was looking at other districts and some comparable. Because last year, we know when we received the $5 million in state aid, we looked at about five other districts in Morris County that was relatively similar in size, more or less. And they got very large increases too. They also got, some of them got very large increases this year as well. So, again, and so that's what the equalization aid does. It equalizes the difference. But it's, it's based on wealth in the community. But you could see transportation aid, we received more in that. And our special ed aid, which is great, $940,000, and our security aid for, listen, I was dancing in the streets when I saw that 340 because I was planning for 1.1 million dollars was the 3%. And I just assumed that that's what they were going to do. So, that's about 0.08%. So, that, that was fantastic.
And I think that's going back to Mr., Dr. Jared Danos' point. When you create a budget like this, you start with not understanding how much money you're going to have. So, you always have to make what I, I hope, what's most likely, and hope you not. So, this is, so we kind of come up with three budgets to kind of see what's going to stick. And luckily, and I say luckily, that we only lost about close to 340 compared to what other districts have lost. But certainly it was not the 3% that we were, also had a version out there. You had other questions, Ms. Reses?
No, I wanted to also say, you know, thank you so much too. Because part of this is education for everyone here, right? I know I made a request, and we've all really asked a lot of questions to go through each committee to, you know, we purposely make a very much a focused attention on the students', you know, well-being and education when we come up with this, you know, working with you for the budget. And it's been amazing. And it's also really, really detailed. And, you know, the information, the answers, people have questions about, you know, where do the dollars go? And this typically, Ms. Showning, the last years is up on our website right now publicly. And this will be back up on our website when we finalize it for everyone to have access to it. So, there shouldn't be, there's no secrets or, you know, we're trying, doing our best with the transparency of the dollars and the focus on the students. And I really appreciate that. I think this whole board does. And I hope the community really, you know, sees that, you know, shines through. When you walk our buildings, you see our students, every one of those dollars is, you know, put, comes from this budget.
And certainly, I know I'm speaking behalf of Ms. Showning as well. We'd like to thank the board. Certainly, we've worked closely with everyone through committee, through phone calls, conversations, meetings. And we, we can't thank you enough for your support. You know, throughout this whole process, the goal has always been, how can we maximize, you know, the monies going back to our students? And what can we do to ensure that they are continuing their, the phenomenal education they do get in this district? So, I want to thank everyone for your leadership. I appreciate it.
Any other questions? And Ms. Showning, which date do we have for the final budget hearing? I think it's in two meetings, correct?
It's, it's the.
I just wanted to, so the public.
May 12th.
May 12th?
No, it's April, sorry. April 28th.
April 28th.
It's the day after spring break.
So, for the public's information, the final budget hearing will be on April 28th.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's the day we return from spring break, just FYI.
And with that, no more questions from the board? Okay, we'll move on then to the Personnel Committee report. And Ms. Aquino.
Thank you. The Personnel Committee met on March 4th, and all members were present. The committee discussed a proposal from the Transportation Department to change the job title and job description of the recently vacated garage clerk position. The position would now be called Fleet Coordinator, and additional responsibilities would be added. Dr. Banjia and Mr. Moore updated the committee on actions the district has been taking related to next year's budget, which we all just saw. The committee also discussed exploring different variations of a communications and/or public relations position for the district. And Mr. Moore also updated the committee on several of our reoccurring monthly personnel topics. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from the board?
Thank you.
Okay. Seeing none, we'll go on to C and T Committee and Ms. Figuera.
The Curriculum and Technology Committee met on March 3rd here at the board office. Those in attendance were Dr. Banjia, Mrs. McDermott, Ms. Aquino, Mrs. O'Neil, Mrs. Fenton, and myself. We discussed proposed field trips. Dr. Banjia and Mrs. McDermott presented future proposals for the elementary field trips. And the administration is working towards aligning the cost of all field trips to ensure equity. We had a mid-year academic update by Mrs. McDermott. She reviewed mid-year student learning data from both iReady and Linkit. And we reviewed the academic progress. We had a budget overview by Mrs. McDermott. She provided an overview of key priorities within the curriculum and instruction budget. The discussion focused on major investments in instructional resources and professional development initiatives. And we also had a technology report. Although Dr. Kreider was not present, we did review a tech update that she provided.
And do we have any questions or comments from the board? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to Finance and Operations.
Yes. So, the Finance and Operations Committee met March 4th. Everyone was present. We also had a visitor, a guest visitor, Ms. Fenton. Again, I know we've talked budget round and round. It is, but again, a huge thank you to everybody who's worked on it. It is one thing to put together a budget. It is a huge, heavy lift. But then it is a completely other thing to show your work on said budget. That's a lot of work. And so, I really appreciate the time dedication you guys have put into showing your work. We really appreciate it. And it's a whole other thing to make it easy to understand, even if budget's not your thing. And so, I'm really just impressed with how well you guys have done all three of those things. So, thank you. And I'm not going to talk about the budget anymore. A couple of other things that we talked about. We have an energy audit underway, which is kind of exciting to Ms. Showning's point before. We're here to educate children, not to pay a utility bill. I mean, we're going to pay our bills, but we'd like to pay less. And so, we have partnered with Amaresco, and they are conducting an energy audit to make sure that we are actually not paying too much for energy, which is great. Nobody wants to overpay for anything. So, they're going to be also assessing things like lighting, HVAC systems, and overall energy efficiency. And finally, in, you know, the vein of audits and studies, we are also getting ready to participate in a capacity study, which is very important. This is where we're going to understand what we have in the district and what we don't in terms of space, all of our buildings, to see what is usable, what's not. It's a really important step to understand. I know we all go into buildings, right, in the district, and we say, but there's all this space down here for this. Why aren't we using it? This is going to show us where we have the space and where we don't. And where is the usable space? And how can we be super efficient with the space that we have? So, that is another step that we are taking to do our due diligence and to make sure that we are maximizing what we have in our district for our students, our staff, and all of our taxpayers. And that's what I have. Any questions?
Any questions or comments from the board?
I think that was a record of how people read their minutes. I think that was. That was good.
It's a trend.
Let's keep it up. But there's another. Let's see if we can keep it up.
Let's see what Louisa could do.
One more. All pressures on Louisa.
One more.
All right. We will move on to then Policy, Policy and Governance. Ms. Melendez.
Policy Committee met on the, on Thursday, March 6th. All committee members were present. In the, during the meeting, Dr. Banjia reviewed policy and regulations update for Strauss May. Many of the changes were mandated due to updates to the New Jersey State law, particularly the Uniform State Memorandum of Agreement Between Education and Law Enforcement. Other statutes also related to student conduct, electronic devices, graduation requirements were discussed. The most, one of the most important that was discussed was the Spectator Code of Conduct. And I invite everyone to take a look at that. It's going to be posted, the agenda is posted online. It's especially important. This new policy is required by the New Jersey State and Terracolastic Athletic Association. And required elements in the policy include immediate removal for violations. So, I invite all the parents and all the community to take a look at those. Other policies also discussed outside Strauss May update include the creation of a new policy on FERPA. That's it.
Any questions or comments from the board? Now, I had one question where I like a comment. With regards to the NJSI double A new policy, are there regulations that are going to be placed in, or guidance maybe even for our district with regards to how to manage some of these events? The consequences are how our staff is supposed to manage, you know, when, we have these very large events in our district, right, that we host. We host regions for, you know, wrestling. When you have that many folks in a room, are there regulations with it underneath that policy saying, you know, this is how we expect to manage an incident or, you know, the large crowd, et cetera?
So, unlike a lot of policies, this policy is quite explicit. It's rather lengthy, and it already does state the consequences for behaviors. Often, they sometimes say refer to regulation. This one states it in the policy. So, I think as a whole right now, it provides a great deal of direction. And we, as a district, took it upon ourselves to make it work for us. So, while Strauss May certainly provided a framework for us to work from, we, you know, adapted it a little bit. We incorporated some education components as well. Similar to our bus safety program, we really want to make sure that the behavior doesn't continue. We are a place of education, right? So, you'll notice that, you know, when you get, I believe, to the second violation, there is some, a video you have to watch and things you have to learn about because inherently, we just don't want the behavior to continue. And certainly, a part of that anticipation for increased monitoring, because to monitor all these situations, we're bringing back athletic coordinator. It's a position that had been in the district a number of years ago. And we are bringing it back because we do anticipate a greater need for being vigilant, especially because what this policy also dictates is not only are we, if someone violates this policy, does it impact home games, it also impacts away games. So, we also anticipate if we are holding the line for away games for our attendees, that it's the same as other districts. So, we are trying to mitigate and look at that. So, we already budgeted and worked successively with our EMO organization in order to ensure that we can bring that, I guess, rollback.
Okay.
So, I hope that answered your question. Did I answer your question?
Yeah. And part of it too was for the public's education too.
We already got that in there? Um, we just don't want, she didn't get to violation two, though. That's all I hope.
Any other questions from the board? Okay. We will move on to Board Subcommittee and Parent-Teacher Association Liaison Reports. Does anyone from the board have anything? We have, we'll sit over here, and then we'll flip to the public then. Ms. Figuera.
Yep. So, this is an update from the Flanders PTA, who are not present, but asked that I share on their behalf. The Boys Dance will be held this Wednesday, March 12th. Family Steam Night is also this week. That will be held Thursday evening, March 13th. And the FPTA will be providing refreshments. They are going to be having a family reading club, which will have two separate meetings, similar to One Book, One School, if you're familiar to that program. They are scheduled for March 26th and April 9th at night for families to come and read. The Mount Olive Senior Scholarship, FPTA will be sponsoring. And they'll, it'll be released this week by the Guidance Department. FPTA is providing two separate $500 scholarships. They are requesting a writing sample. And they would also like it noted if your parent was involved in the FPTA. You're not barred from applying if your parents were not part of the PTA. They would just like you to provide that information if so. On April 1st, the FPTA is having a school-wide assembly called Wacky Science. And the art fundraiser will run at the end of this month. The Girls' Dance was successful and fun. They want to thank the support of the 4th Grade Pizza and the 5th Grade Bake Sale. Both were successful for grade level fundraising goals. They have more planned for April and May, but they'll report that out at the next meeting. Thank you.
Questions from the board? And we'll swing around us whenever, Ms. Figuera has something.
Yes, I attended the Mount Olive Middle School PTA meeting. And just a couple, couple of quick updates from that. They just wrapped the penny wars, the school penny wars, where everybody brought in their loose change. And just from that, they raised $1,755. Winning teams would receive an ice cream party, and top teachers from each grade will get Amazon gift cards. 8th grade celebrations are underway. It's March, and the celebrations are, you know, basically around the corner. There is an 8th grade dance, obviously, on June 6th. And so, volunteers are already hard at work, you know, planning decorations, et cetera. Never too late to volunteer for that.
We already signed you up, Mrs. Figuera.
I'm very busy.
I, but anybody can attend. You don't have to have. You don't have to have an 8th grader, and probably better to volunteer if you don't. But lawn signs and T-shirts are also on sale now to celebrate the graduating class. There is a new school store kiosk being purchased for the, the school store so that they can access supplies and spirit wear, et cetera. And the guidance counselors have been gathering input on what should be stocked, which is very cool. It's everything, right, from like pencils to all the way up to spirit wear and everything in between, and it's very cool.
I'm very excited. I made my request in.
All I'm saying, right? All I'm saying, it's very cool. The Tricky Tray is coming up. It is unfortunately sold out, but it sold out within a matter of days. Well, I mean, for, if you didn't get your tickets. But that is their biggest fundraiser. It sold out in just under 10 days, I believe. So planning is in full swing. Extra ticket packages are still available if you did get an entry ticket. And then finally, teacher grants and staff appreciation. The PTO is just continuing to fund the teacher grant requests, and is also working on a special appreciation initiative for the Transportation Department to recognize their hard work. And that's everything.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? And I think anyone else in the room? I know Ms. Fenton, you have one.
Yes, Amy sent a letter that I'm going to read from CPeg, because I do not understand all of this stuff. Maybe you guys will get this. What?
I said I was there, but she didn't send it to me.
Would you like to read this? They met on February 11th via Zoom. The District Directors of Special Services came and discussed the multiple topics available to staff on February 14th PD Day. They also had BCBAs and behavioral support teams come and discuss the roles of the behavior support teams and the behavioral reference process. We had an engaging conversation to have a better understanding of the general process.
Is your mic on?
I don't think your mic's on.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Okay, sorry about that. They had engaged in conversation to have better understandings of the general process of managing behaviors while in school settings. As always, we remind the parents of the different discussions, spotlights, and fairs that are happening or upcoming in the district. Amy did attend the SSEAC, New Jersey State Special Education Advisory Council on February 20th. I know we have mentioned this before, but I hope someone from the Mount Olive attended, attends this extremely informative council meeting. It's jam-packed with information on multiple levels. Office of Special Education, the prize is now in 12 languages and available on a new website. CADRE is looking for local schools to work with the Department of Special Ed to support local schools to decrease, to decrease due process requests and work on conflict resolution. Multiple broadcasts. One, new student information cards to roll out so that transportation staff have a better understanding about the special needs of the students they transport. Two, Dare to Dream Student Leadership Conferences will be on college campus to highlight strategies to promote self-advocacy skills for middle and high school students with disabilities. Dates provided in the broadcast. Three, a release of emotional and behavioral program quality indicators, which is EBPQI, and statewide information sessions, dates were provided. Four, the scope of services of professional and deaf education guidelines, along with informational sessions to discuss how their areas of expertise complement one another and work collaboratively to ensure that students who are deaf or hard of hearing thrive. Five, release of transportation considerations for students with disabilities resource guide. And they all have links that she can provide. The Office of Special Education was also happy to announce their Second Annual of Winter Learning Institute of 2025, with this year's theme, Reaching the Edges. Excuse me. The OSCE will focus on strategies and initiatives that ensure equitable outcomes for all students. By improving policies, practices, and procedures, we will empower educators, families, and interest parties to better serve every learner, virtually running from March 10th to March 14th. Multiple different divisions across the state provided updates. She can provide those links, which were orientation sessions for CBI cohort enrollment in the 2025-2026 Community-Based Instruction Project Cohort. The New Jersey Department of Education Office of Special Education in partnership with the Bog Center on Disability and Human Development invites local educational agencies to apply for participation in the Community-Based Instruction Project of 2025-2026 Cohort. Register, registration is by April 1st. We have the Learning Resource Center Inclusion Institute on March 18th, Preschool Inclusion Leadership Conference on April 10th, NJCEC 2025 Spring Conference on March 17th, focusing on high-leverage practices. Seventh Annual Innovations in Special Education Technology, Blending AI with Strategies to Improve Instructional Outcomes and Foster Independence on March 14th. There were multiple agencies discussing the ICE and the supports and websites and trainings available to immigrant families to know their rights. Then they had an extremely informative speaker, Deborah Lienem, from NJTSER, speak on the NJ Dyslexia Handbook, the 2024 update, Aligning to Best Practices in New Jersey Tiered Systems of Support for Early Literacy. She's an excellent speaker, and I think Mount Olive should look into having her speak. The council then reviewed indicators 1, 2, and 14. Secondary success, which was informative to have a better understanding of graduation rates when it pertains to special education. Dropout, as well as special education students are moving on to college or successful working settings post-graduation. The next meeting is Tuesday, tomorrow, March 11th. The original speaker had to cancel, but they have the honor to have Sue, Ms. Staretta, come and present. She is a wellness advocate with 18 years of experience, supporting individuals through life changes. As a resilient mentor and mother to a child with special needs, she offers compassionate, practical guidance to special need parents, helping them navigate their unique journeys with ease. Certified in heart math, mindfulness-based, stress reduction, and suicide prevention, she blends holistic stress management techniques to empower parents to thrive amid adversity. Currently training as a yoga teacher, Susan is passionate about turning struggles into growth, providing a toolkit for emotional balance and inner strength. And then she says, "Thank you." That's it.
Any questions from the board? Was that three pages or two pages?
Two pages, but it's all from one day.
Was it 10-point font?
If you want to be invited to CPeg, if you're not, if you don't get the invite, you can email. Your email is on the district's website. Email that email to say you'd like to be invited and provide your email, and then she'll add you to the list.
And they, they are all Zoom, excuse me, all Zoom now.
Virtual.
So they're very easy.
Okay. No questions from the board?
I just have one comment, I'm sorry. The Mount Olive High School parent, the next meeting is on March 18th. And I would like to highlight some of the activities. Tomorrow, the Mount Olive High School National Honor Society has their induction. And on Wednesday, we have the Rising Freshman Curriculum Fair taking place.
Ms. Nercis, can I add something?
Yeah.
You know, I inadvertently left out a very special group. We also had that amazing wrestling tournament down at the States.
I had some on my list.
So I just, you know, I mentioned robotics, I talked about ROTC, and I don't want them to think anything other than how proud we are of them as well. We had a group of students go down. We had two actually place. We had Molly Smythe, who is our sophomore, who placed fourth in the state, along with Nico Gonzalez, who placed 10th. So we also, once again, another well-rounded, amazing weekend for our students. And fifth, was it fifth?
No, no, Nico.
Seven, seven, sorry.
Nico Gonzalez was fourth in the state.
Oh, sorry, apologize. Thought it's seven.
Yeah.
I inverted that, I apologize.
Mark has people that were there. Yeah, so Molly Smythe came seventh in the place. She actually won the seventh, eighth match. And then Nico Gonzalez went on to the wrestle, to the blood match, to the wrestle backs for the third, fourth match, right, Mark? Am I saying this correctly, my wrestling friend? And Nico placed fourth place, and seven students will actually be our underclassmen out of all.
That is.
And that's our first female, right?
That's right. And the coach's kid, right?
Second female. Second female to place in the States. And I think we are the only ones that ever have twins that actually both attend at the same time.
And I think people that even recognize that we actually have a student who doesn't attend Mount Olive necessarily. She's a female wrestler who actually is on our team because of that, that her home district doesn't have a team. So we're, you know, I'm very proud of the fact that we also extend this opportunity to expand the, you know, chance for our female athletes to participate in something they may not be, if they are not even Mount Olive students. So it's really exciting as well.
Robotics does the same thing. You know that, right? So one of their teams is made out of different schools that don't have robotics.
So we just spread the love.
Yeah, we do.
We spread the love. We're inclusive. There you go. Speaking of spreading the love, I just want to remind everyone, we have our last session with David Nash next Thursday, which is the 20th of March. So please make sure you do sign up for the last of our series with him. It's focused upon the partnership between schools and families at home. And certainly, if you're unable to attend, it is virtual. You can still just sign up, and you'll get the recording of it, so you can watch it at your leisure, anytime. Just a reminder, so next Thursday, the 20th, I believe at 6:30, if I remember correctly. This is our last of our series with David Nash. I just, before, it slips my mind, too.
Anyone else from the board have any reports?
I do have one. I attended the town council meeting on March 4th. Mr. Zilla went to finance, we divided and conquered town council. The fire chief, there was a ceremony for his retirement. The FMBA contract for public safety was voted upon. There was a large presence of homeowners that, speaking about the paving for the Connolly development. And there was a bit of conversation around the first reading for an ordinance to ban rentals, so similar to Airbnb for short-term rentals that are under 31 days of rental time. I believe the council is possibly considering different conversations or comments that were made. But they did vote upon the first reading at that time. So basically, they're looking to ban Airbnb's and VRBO rentals. It became, some of the items in the first reading of that ordinance had some stipulations about who can reside in the home or how often they were there. So I believe the council is going to be reconsidering that. And that was all I had for any reports. Do we have anyone in the public from any of our Parent Teacher Association liaisons? The mic is open if we have anyone? Nope, okay. Seeing none, we'll move on. Board President Report. Everybody took the wind out of my sail. Wanted to recognize, I see some of our folks here from our robotics team, as you've heard how amazing they all did. Was it three teams placed? One, right, guys? Well, for those that don't know, we hosted, was it the Mid-Atlantic Robotics Competition? Do I have the titles right? Yep. You guys read my email? I know one of you, ask Mr. Berry to read the email. So for those that don't know, the students had actually emailed us, asking us to attend. I was unable to attend, and I wrote you guys a little email back. So we had the three, three teams. What I also found interesting, I was informed that there is a large cost, right, associated? I'm looking at the students, for those that are at home, we have a couple in the audience. There's a large cost, right, associated with some of the wins that they, they have, right? You're going to Texas, and each student needs to raise funds. So if there's anyone in the community that's looking to make a donation to our robotics team, I believe I was told it's between $3,000 to $4,000 per student to travel to Texas if you, for Worlds. Yep. So we, yeah, but it's amazing. You guys will be going to Worlds, is that right? Hopefully. We still have some more? Okay. And our head coach oversees three teams at the high school. He oversees the team at our middle school and the future Lego League teams at all of our elementary schools. So we have a staff of three to four coaches, right? And then the rest of the parents, and even some alumni parents, are all volunteers that put in 12 to 20 hours a week of their time. Look at them, they're all shaking their head. And how many, how many hours do you guys spend in the, in the school afterwards? Just working on your competition? Oh, my goodness. So after you go to the full day of school, you guys come, stay, and you're there for almost seven hours, working on your machines? Okay. You are better than me. All right, so we want to recognize them. ROTC was on my list. What was it, first place for unarmed color guard, armed color guard first place?
They swept, they swept. Just everything.
What did they not win?
I don't know, but I, I'm not aware of it. It's complete sweep. Yes. Number one all around.
Oh, well, you know, we're a little competitive. It doesn't matter if you're in sports, in ROTC or robotics, geez. And yes, so wrestling, as we heard, 10 boys, one girl, and I'll name you guys. Molly Smythe, Christian Barris, Anthony Piomonte, Brandon Barris, Colin Smythe, Justin Buller, Tanner Perez, Drew Coppola, Tyler Cummings, Nico Gonzalez, and Jared Martini. Did I get everyone? And with that, seven of them are underclassmen, hopefully returning to States next year. We are probably one of the largest non-private schools at the event. The other thing I wanted to just recognize, our deepest condolences are, one of our, I guess, original coaches, former hockey coach, Dave Hansen, passed away last week at the age of 52. Left behind a wife, four kids, Abby, Brody, Cameron, and Lexi. Coach Hansen was here in, what, 2003, Mr. Stansberry? And he was one of the original individuals helping to grow our hockey program with the division. I was told of adding a JV team, and here we are, almost 20 years later. So we do, he was actually the, recently the head coach over at West Morris. So the entire hockey community is recognizing him, but when we say marauders for life, we, we mean it. With that, we will, any comments from the board? No, okay. We'll go on to public comments on action items. Members of, members of the community may comment on any action item prior to board discussion. Please state your name and address for the record. All comments must be respectfully presented. Abusive or obscene comments will not be tolerated. The mic is open.
Why are you looking at me?
Martin Wells-Miller, 25 foot crest staff, Bylake, New Jersey.
Is it coming up on the screen?
Testing. Hello. Okay. First off, I want to say thank you for the budget presentation. It's probably one of the best we've seen here in a long, long time. Very thorough. I had the pleasure of seeing her present to, through Krefi's program a few weeks ago, and she said she wanted to hold the thunder for tonight, and she did. I'm here basically to talk about action item 10.13. Hold on, for the robotics, if you hold on, I can tell you about fundraising before you leave. So agree for me. All right? So I would like to have us table the approval of Strausmei as the vendor for our bylaws. As many of you may know, Strausmei made a massive mistake in the past few years on a policy regarding transgender apparent notifications. There are other vendors out there that do this as well, New Jersey school boards, even personal attorneys, maybe even Giffords firm does this. I'd like this to see us actually go out for bid on this due to the fact that the organization, Strausmei, only has three employees, a husband and wife, and then a nephew. That's all Strausmei is. I've emailed them several times in the past about things, and you get no reply from them. So I, I think it would be prudent for our district to table this, to actually go out for bid or find proper vendors who will actually give the proper presentations, because they screwed up the whole state, lawsuits, wazoo's all over the state over what they did. Not an apology from them, from anyone. Okay? And I think it would do our district some good to actually do the due diligence and go out for a proposal. And that's all I have.
Dr. Banja, can you explain actually what 10.13? It's the approval, we already are in contract with Strausmei, but the approval to put the information on to our website?
If you currently go on our website, our, all our board policies and regulations are stored via board docs. And currently, the ability to search those policies and regulations are very limited. However, what's the service that we're paying for that refers to that motion is them housing our policies, regulations, not them writing it. Those are two different things. So all we're doing is allowing them to take our policies, which we give them, and use their... their, I guess their server to list everything out so it's easier for the public to search them in a more transparent manner. So that's all that's doing. They're not going to be writing policy for us. You know, we are, we paid to Strauss Esme for a number of years. We received their policy alerts, which I believe almost every single district across the state does. However, we take a great deal of pride in reviewing the updates ourselves. As I pointed out, with Ms. Melendez was reviewing our policies, those alerts are not taken and then, you know, put onto our agendas. We do a great deal of due diligence. You can ask Ms. Soufley, especially with the spectator one, how much we went into that. So that particular motion is just housing our policy and regulation, not them writing it.
So you're basically paying for storage of our database?
Yes.
And they're presenting it?
Yes.
Okay, so this is not the contract for them to give you the alert on changes?
No. No. We already do that, we've been doing that for years.
All right. Well, as Strauss Esme is not as reliable as most people think they are and I'd like to, if possible, still go out to proper bid or figure out how we can do it properly on our own servers so we don't have to spend the $8,000 because over 10 years, then you're $80,000. You know what I mean?
That's one time, this is a one-time fee in order to move over the actual cost machine. We can, I'm not, I can't think of it off the top of my head.
It's about $3,500.
It's $3,500.
So it's $3,500 versus hiring, no offense, Mr. Gevert, another attorney to go through every regulation law and policy that the state puts out and then have it reviewed in-house?
And I will say, I will say this, Strauss Esme has been a resource as far as they do, host webinars in which they go over policy changes and we have a great conversation with them. I call them all the time to provide clarification. So they are, you know, respected organization that we've got a great deal of work with for a number of years. So, you know, I can't comment on what you're sharing.
So let me understand the process.
Yep.
The process is, the state puts out laws, regulations that the, or Department of Education.
Yes.
Strauss Esme takes those, gathers that information. We have a service that we pay for already from Strauss Esme where they send us those policies or updated policies or policy alerts. Policy is the broad governance. We look and review, and let me tell you, our policy and governance, you know, committee is very thorough.
Now.
Madam President, this is not a back and forth with the public. It needs to be held in public, not for the public. So can we just move on?
Sure. But I think the public needs to understand what the process is.
I understand that, but I think we could do that at the end.
And so we take those policies, we apply them to how, within the law, works for our district. Under those policies are regulations of how they are implemented, right?
And regulations are not necessarily a board function as far as approval. There's only certain mandated regulations other than, the rest are administrative prerogative.
Okay.
But as a district, we pride ourselves in order, also reviewing those regulations as a whole.
Okay. So 10.13 is not what was originally thought of. Is there anything else, Mr. Wells-Miller?
Just in the future, that you also can look at the NJ SBA also for a resource, which is, tends to be a little bit more reliable.
Okay. And anything else, Mr.?
If this is for storage and database, that's different than what it's meant to me.
Yep.
And so then I'll retract my motion and I'm going to go help our box and raise money.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else from the public on comments on action items?
Hi, Mr. Gallagher. Brian Gallagher, 135 Crenshaw Drive. Just wanted to make sure if you guys do take Martin's suggestion, look out for RFPs and other advices. He mentioned that it was causing a lot of lawsuits and wazoo's, so make sure you check their policy on wazoo's if you look at other law firms. Oh, there he is. Yeah, you were talking about lawsuits and wazoo's.
All right, Mr. Gallagher.
So I had a question, actually, so, I know. I do have a question about the bill list. I'll lean down. There was a $555 invoice paid to Flanagan, Barone, O'Brien LLC. It was, sure, I know it's commentary, but if anyone wanted to provide an answer on what that was for?
That is a legal bill from current litigation.
Okay. Not from the legal firm seated here today?
No, that's Skorinski-Hollnbeck.
Yes, okay. So this is from legal firm for insurance?
Correct.
Okay. So this, this firm here, the attorney here, they don't handle insurance claims and legal proceedings for that?
Sometimes they do.
Sometimes they do.
It depends. We work, they work with our insurance company.
It depends what our insurance company assigns.
Yeah.
And who is supposed to be responsible for that.
So that would be for like a recent settlement, legal fees for that?
We can't, yeah.
No, yeah.
You can't comment.
Okay. And also I had a question about a invoice for $1,076.25 to the Machado Law Firm?
That's our special education.
Special education.
Okay. So they handle the special education?
Correct.
Legal services? So we have those two firms I just listed there?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else from the public on action items and action items only? Nope. Okay. Seeing none, we will move on to the approval of monthly expenditures. Mr. Giordano, can you please make a motion?
Yes, Madam President. On the recommendation of the superintendent, approve monthly expenditures and reports 6.1 to 6.4.
Second.
Any questions or comments from the board? Nope. Seeing none, we'll take a roll call, please, Ms. Shonan.
Dr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. Aquino?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenton?
Yes.
Mrs. Figuera?
Yes.
Mrs. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendez?
Yes.
Mrs. Narcisse?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Neil?
Yes.
Mr. Orzillo?
Yes.
We will move on to personnel action items. Ms. Aquino?
Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, I'd like to make a motion to move personnel action items 7.1 through 7.17.
Second.
Do we have any questions or comments from the board?
I do, Madam President. On retirement, shout out to Ms. Kennedy.
Yes.
She is one of the best human beings, let alone educators, I've ever been around in my life. She taught both of my kids. I took my daughter to see her play multiple times. She's just a great person and we will be sad to see her go and she will be sorely missed.
Absolutely.
I don't think any of us can echo that even as loud as we really would like to. Ms. Kennedy is a force to be reckoned with and a, you know, bright, bright star. And we will all be her new groupies in her band, I think.
Yes.
All right. Anyone else? Any questions or comments? Nope. Seeing none. Okay, we'll go to a roll call, please.
Mrs. Aquino?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenton?
Yes.
Mrs. Figuera?
Yes.
Mrs. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Dr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendez?
Yes.
Mrs. Narcisse?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Neil?
Yes.
Mr. Orzillo?
Yes.
Okay. We will move on to curriculum and technology. Ms. Figuera?
Upon recommendation of the superintendent, I'd like to make a motion to approve items 8.1 through 8.3.
Second.
Any questions or comments from the board? No? Okay. Seeing none, we'll go take a roll call.
Mrs. Figuera?
Yes.
Dr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. Aquino?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenton?
Yes.
Mrs. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendez?
Yes.
Mrs. Narcisse?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Neil?
Yes.
Mr. Orzillo?
Yes.
Okay. We will move on to finance and operations. And Ms. Petro.
I got you. Sorry. You're great. Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, I'd like to make a motion to approve action items 9.1 through 9 point, let me keep scrolling, 17.
Second.
Any questions from the board?
I do want to make one comment on 9.10. A huge thank you to the SHSP, that's San Shore's PTA for the donation. If you guys see there all that they donated, it's some really great stuff for indoor recess. So thank you so much to the SHSP.
And thank you for, Ms. Shonan, for putting those items, bringing them to our attention. I think they're really important.
Any other questions, comments? Nope. Okay, we'll take a roll call.
Mrs. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mrs. Figuera?
Yes.
Mrs. Aquino?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenton?
Yes.
Dr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendez?
Yes.
Mrs. Narcisse?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Neil?
Yes.
Mr. Orzillo?
Yes.
And we will move on to administrative action items. Ms. Melendez, please.
Open recommendation of the superintendent, I would like to make a motion to approve item 10.1 through 10.13.
Second.
Any questions or comments from the board? Okay, seeing none, we will take a roll call.
Mrs. Melendez?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenton?
Yes.
Mrs. Aquino?
Yes.
Mrs. Figuera?
Yes.
Mrs. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Dr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. Narcisse?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Neil?
Yes.
Mr. Orzillo?
Yes.
No, it's me. That's you? What happened? I'm slacking.
Oh, she has the control.
Yeah.
All right. Now we are on to public comments. Students, parents, employees, and community members may comment on any item of interest pertaining to the Mount Olive School District. Please state your name and address for the record. All comments must be respectfully presented. Abusive or obscene comments will not be tolerated. The mic is open.
Brian Gallagher, 135 Crenshaw Drive. I just wanted to follow up, as we kind of, I kind of mentioned before, Flanagan, Barone, O'Brien LLC, the law firm, that has had invoices over the past year, usually for a couple hundred dollars, handles a lot of the insurance settlement payouts for the district. You know, a small factor, maybe a couple thousand if you add them all up. The Machado Law Firm, which handles special education law, which is big in any district, charges about an average of $1,000 to maybe $3,000 or $4,000 per month. So since they've been in place since last April, which is almost about a year now, we spent about $25,000, or exactly $25,834.38 on them for special education law. Skorinski-Hollnbeck, who has been around since last February, has been here a whole year now. We talked about this, I think, when I was here last time, waiting for that last month, to get the full year picture. We have paid them $308,330.68. Ms. Shonan, by the way, did an incredibly better number with, job with numbers than I do, so I just put this into Excel and hit some total. An average per month of $28,000. So per month, we spend an average on general counsel, which for the past year that I've been coming here and others have been coming here, people have been told, well, there's more Oprah's, we haven't really been given any specifics, you know, on the data. Now, that we're due it, it's obviously attorney-client privilege. But we know that special education law is not handled by them. Insurance is not, claims or litigation, legal services are mostly not handled by them. I could be wrong on that and I'm happy to be told if I'm wrong. I just find it amazing that, we had a previous law firm that, I think when I asked a while ago, was told that the retainer, and you can correct me because you probably know Ms. Shonan, you told me this last time, for the last law firm was about $17,000 to $19,000?
Correct.
Something like that?
On a basis.
Okay. And it was a retainer. It wasn't just billable hours for $160 per hour or $100 for a paralegal. We were told that there were kind of things being put in place to mitigate unnecessary legal service fees being billed. I don't think that's been the case after a year now. And, you know, we had a great budget presentation and when I talk to a lot of people and we kind of talk about the district and our money and our taxes, I find it's very easy sometimes if people, if people disagree with me, they say, well, it's a blip, it's a decimal point, right? $300,000, we have an $80 million budget. You know, I think part of it is money, but also part of it is the decision. I think it was a reckless decision originally and shows poor judgment from the people of this board that voted for this resolution, one of us proposed last February by Mr. Orzillo. I think that you can snowball bad decisions into really kind of having this district get out of control with the way money is spent and dealt out. And I would hope that moving forward, we can look to at least inform the public. It's good to inform about a budget and how you're saving money here, you're saving money there. But, you know, some of these decisions, when questioned, there's just never been given any answers. So I'd hope moving forward, the district can maybe try to, you know, explain why we're, you know, it lasts June, on June 24th, you voted to increase the maximum level of legal spending by $120,000, up to $385,000. $120,000 seems like the full retainer of the last law firm, you know, maybe a little less. It just seems that we're not correcting any of the problem, we're just making issues worse. So I'm pretty disappointed in, first of all, that resolution on June 24th was voted on yes by everybody here, so I'm a little disappointed in everybody on that one.
I wasn't here.
Sorry about that. You weren't here and I looked at you first, so I apologize. Okay.
Excuse me, we're not doing back and forth, Mr. Giordano.
Okay. But I am disappointed in that.
I can't hear the speaker.
I am disappointed in last June, before the end of the summer, kind of sneaking that in to raise that amount. And I have always, and I've always been here, which is fine, and so I've always been disappointed in this board's move to replace the old attorney, regardless of personal, you know, beliefs on a person or anything. I think the last thing Mr. Zudimer said before he left was that he had a pretty stellar record here when he was the attorney for the district. And I don't think I ever heard a good reason on why the change was made. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gallagher. Business decisions are business decisions that need to be made, not personal decisions. Litigation has increased significantly and this board has put in place an RFP schedule. If you would like to take a look at our last meeting, I believe it was listed on there. So we have heard, and we do, we'll be having a proper schedule of review. We did, I believe, increase our legal fees the prior year, though, to, towards the end of the year as well. But we do have a rise, as for special ed, we have a rising special ed population that, you know, laws, rules, regulations need to be put in place for our students in protection. And with that, anyone else to the mic?
Martin Wells-Miller, 25 Woodcrest Ave., Bud Lake, New Jersey. I know not everyone's informed in the public of all the unethical things the past attorney has done, and this is me speaking personally, because I have the information.
Mr. Wells-Miller, we can't, we...
I'm not asking you to comment, I'm just saying what I've already presented to the board in the past. I presented in the past to the board the unethical things that were done by the past attorney.
Allegations.
I'm proud, no, no, these are factual. I'm proud of what the board has done to replace an unethical attorney. Because you can't compromise your ethics, because once you do that, you can't go back. I'm very proud of our current attorney and his ethical standards. Okay?[1529.73]